Motion on the floor by Ms. Crummins, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve the agenda with the noted changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries on a six oh voice vote. We'll roll right into the action of the minutes from the regular meeting of Wednesday, January 8th in the open session. Any noted corrections or changes to the meeting? Who else?
I have one. The motion on food in the field house was given Kwame and Barry voting against. Yeah, I was the one voting against, not Barry. I knew you didn't want to be popcorn thoroughly huge. So I'll put my name behind that one.
Okay, are there any other change?
Corrections?
Let's move for approval and correct.
Second.
All right, I get a motion on the floor by Mr. Cray, seconded by Mr. Dolphin to approve with the noted correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, motion will carry on a five oh one vote. Crummins with the extension. Takes us to the action of the minutes from the policy committee meeting on Wednesday, January 15th.
How much will per both minutes?
And I will second that motion. Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Ms. Kwame, seconded by myself to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries on a six oh voice vote. We'll move right to administrative reports and this evening we have Ms. Daniels to talk to us about the people count.
Sure, so our second Friday, January, people count took place on January 10th. Our count showed a total people count of 753 students. This is an increase of 19 students going through here to the 23, 24 second Friday count of 734. Our head count showed our 4K class adding 10 more students than last year, but our senior class size dropped by 11. So our current class size in Laxville, Halden area, we even believe that we'll have continued declining enrollment as our larger high school classes graduate. And so I've got some trending graphs that you guys should have at your tables there with that data. On the second page, I kind of wanted to just show you, this is our FTE or these are our head counts. You'll see that in the future year where our projections look like, and you see those numbers dropping. So I just kind of wanted to show you what was coming out or what we expect to be coming out. Any questions, I guess? Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Move right along, we'll go into the approval of bills and vouchers in your package. You have the treasurer's report, the superintendent listing of dispersments through January 31st and the district receipts for the month of January. Are there any questions that have not yet been answered in regards to any of the three documents? I reviewed them thoroughly. Now move for approval of all three documents.
I'll second that one.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Mr. Cray, seconded by Ms. Kwame to approve the treasurer's reports, the superintendent listing of dispersments and the district receipts for the month of January. And that is a roll call vote. Cray, yes?
Kwame, yes.
Dolphin, yes?
Schneider, yes?
Kwame, yes.
Here's a six oh vote. We have the announcements this evening.
We have gotten several notifications from the Wisconsin School Board of Education about education that are coming up. I am going to attend the February 27th one, school law. If anyone wants to come, they have your eyes open. And then we got one today about school board day at Capitol. Unfortunately, I have a conflict that day, but it'd be a great chance to talk to your legislator about school funding.
Do you recall the date for the school law presentation?
The school law is February 27th.
Any other announcements? All right, we ran long. Public input. Does anyone wish to provide public input this evening?
Susan knows about this, but the Waterloo Parks Department has a new online reservation system. I've been in contact with AD dose and so if anybody has any questions on it, contact her myself. We'll have better tracking systems, stuff like that.
And again, that specific way to reserve ball fields, etc.
It's all rental, but the fields are on there, so.
Okay. Is there any other public input? All right, we'll move right into new business. Action item A, as pointed out in your former packet, we have a point of beginning invoice regarding the baseball softball field designs. I believe states we have an attendee virtually to answer any questions in regard to said invoice that is up for approval this evening. Did you have anything you'd like to add on that, Mr. Hany, or do you want to turn the floor over to P O B to give questions in regards?
I believe Lindsay was on there. Is she still on there?
I think it's Scott.
Lindsay Beeman and Scott Morowski from P O B are in attendance, so if anyone has any specific questions for them, they are here.
I guess I have a question about the contract associated with this invoice. I know the contract was on the September agenda and we tabled that item, we took no action. I guess the bill exceeds what our policy says we'll pay without board approval. I don't think we don't pay our bills, so I do think we pay this bill, but I do think we violated our own policy in the way we went about this expense. I'm not really questioning my yes nervous statement. Because yeah, on the invoices states that the, it states that there's a contract, right, a contract amount, contracted amount. So I guess I'm confused on where we got throughout the process of like what phase we got to. I understand it was through phase two, so what does that look like for invoicing?
Is that a question for either Lindsay or I? On kind of where we are with the, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess you can help me answer that. It's like to, when it says contracted amount, was there a contract that was signed? Or was there an agreed amount? And what phase did we get to in the documents?
Okay, so can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Perfect, so this is hi, Lindsay Beeman, point of beginning, Scott, I will leave the answer on that question. So you were engaged with Brian early June, or is it pretty late, right June? And we kicked off our design process mid-July. So we have a P O B proposal that we sent over. It was a three-phase proposal. Phase one consisted of a long-term fee of $25,700. That was going to be your geotechnical investigation, which is your borings. It's going to also include your topographic survey, which was private utility line located, your wetland delineation, and then also a schematic site design. So your invoice for that first phase is going to be that $9,500 for geotechnical, survey services for $12,000, private utility lines for $1,700, and then also your wetland delineation and mapping for $2,500. So if you add those couple together, that will total your phase one of $25,700. So essentially, that is the first step to get the project rolling. To get your, you know, your survey data so we can start drawing our construction documents. After we had that, we moved into our phase two, which was construction documents, stormwater management, permit preparation, and bid coordination. So that phase was going to be based on 6% of construction costs. We basically went through that entire phase, I think September 10th is when we were onsite. We did a final design meeting, page turn of a 99% plan set that we put together. So essentially, we went through almost the entirety of that phase two. Minus, we did not put together permit permits and we did not do bid coordination. So essentially, what we did, Scott and I collaborated, say, hey, what can we do to take that 6% down? Since we did not do permit prep, we did not do bid coordination. So instead of the 6%, we went now to 4%. And if you're looking at the invoice where it says construction documents slash stormwater slash permit slash bid coordination, that contracted amount, that's $6,488, is based on a estimate, an estimate we put together from that 99% plan set. Because if it actually would have went into construction, we would have took our 6% and applied that to the actual construction cost. So since we did not get that far in the project, this was our best way of determining what our fees would be. I don't know if that makes sense?
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
No, very thorough explanation. Other questions? Lindsay, you spoke on to 99% complete plan set. What remains to be completed?
I'm only calling in the 99% because say this project picks up six months, 12 months from now, we would want to revisit, go, just go make tweaks, update, you know, the dates on the plans and just get them prepared to go back or prepared to go up to bid. So that's kind of why I'm calling on the 99% plans. I mean, essentially, they're 100%, but you know, again, if that project picks back up, we're going to want to relook at those with your team and tweak them before they go up to bid.
And really, that, that plan set is in theory good forever, you know, as long as you, you know, the project obviously has to move forward for it to have value. But if it does, this is now or in a year or two years, or even portions thereof it, you know, phasing of it.
So I think, you know, to go off of what Scott's saying, if you, I mean, we could be queued up to just get that project out to bid and even permit submitted, I mean, it would be an easy, you know, quick revisit plan, make sure everything's covered, make some tweaks, work with Kramer, get it ready to go up to bid. So I guess that's, you know, the narrative behind the 99% plan.
Upon reaching a 100% completion, would the plans be stamped?
Let me look here, actually, my engineer. Yes, so I'm hoping to connect with my engineer to see if he would be comfortable stamping them at 99%. I would say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I think, yeah, I think my engineer would definitely be comfortable stamping all of it as it's, and forgive me, I should know this, Scott, but they can stamp plans without submitting to permits, correct?
Yep, correct.
Yes, yeah.
We just refined, you know, the design and the drawings and.
Yeah.
So the phase two, the bid coordination was the only thing that we did not get to? Is that what I understand?
Um, yes, phase two, permit preparation. We did not submit for our leaders, being our NOI, we did not submit to the CSPS, and then we did not do any additional permitting through the municipality. So permitting and then bid coordination are two things that we did not do in phase two. So we apply, so basically we said, well, we're worth 2% of our original 6%. So that's why we went from 6 to 4. We thought that was fair.
So the amount we requested today is 66?
No, it's 103.
Yeah. And 103, so that includes, I don't know if you guys can see the invoice, but construction backs, stormwater, permit prep for 66 and some odd change. And then the last plan I learned is going to be the alternate. So those are also items that we were going to do as alternates that we designed. So I also applied our 4% as well. So now it's going to be a total of approximately $104.
If, if an invoice is paid up and cleared, excuse me, do the plan sets then become property of the Waterloo School District?
Yes.
Yep, yeah, correct. The only thing would be, is that like when Lindsay, when we came up with the 4%. Oh, I got some feedback there.
Yeah.
Unmute yourselves, Scott.
Oh, that's my fault.
Not your fault.
So when we came up with the.
Game there.
Hold on a minute, Scott.
Huh?
I don't know, there's, Mr. Meeting.
Can't you just click the microphone?
You're on mic.
All right, here we go. Please proceed, Scott.
Okay, when Lindsay and I were debating, you know, between the, you know, the, well, we had, the contract was 6%. We tried to come up with the task that we didn't do yet. I, in my opinion, what we have left for permitting and bidding is probably less than, the effort is less than the 2% that we cut. Part of the reason I went, I was comfortable going down to 4% is because the project's not being built yet. So there's a level, so you're, there's a level of risk if our plan, you know, is built or both under construction, that if there was something wrong with the plan or there is, you know, the risk that is involved with a construction document plan set. If it's not built, you don't have any risk, okay? So if, so yes, the plans are 100% yours. But what I would say is I'd really appreciate if for some reason you did move forward, you would let us be involved with the permitting and the bidding to both, you know, to fulfill the full contract. And then obviously, we're taking on the risk then, right, of that project, you know, of the, of the design and the way that is implemented. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify there wasn't like a contract, language in a contract that said that they're not the property of this school because if it's unclear, or at this point, I guess it's unclear if and or when anything will proceed.
Correct.
But as we pay an invoice, there's typically a deliverable and the plan set is our deliverable that we'd be receiving, which could be utilized at a later date.
Correct. Yep, so you would, that plan set, and actually, what Lindsay will probably do is maybe she's done it already, is one drive that plan set over to you so you can archive it. But it'll always be in our file for you to access.
Yep, and then she did this, Scott, I sent over to Brian, to the, the plan sets, the technical specifications, the estimate we came up with, and I believe he also mailed the hard copy, so a full plan set and a scrapbook as well.
Any other questions?
So I, I was not present for our August meetings. I missed the two meetings where I think conversations continued to move forward. I looked back at meeting minutes. I didn't see any presentation to the board around dollar amount, but I wasn't present for the conversation. So I'm just asking a question to my fellow board members, was there ever discussion about this cost associated with point beginnings?
No.
No.
Yeah, I recall.
I went back on my meeting minutes and I didn't see anything.
When I, when I hear that there's 103,000, and I, I kind of recall the expensiveness. I couldn't tell you exactly if it's any amount, but the dollar value.
I know we had a discussion about a bill that we owed and that was to get the plans originally. And I, what was that, 18 bill or, it was that we discussed that we had to pay the bills that had incurred. That was at the September meeting, correct? But I don't, in August, I, like I said, I went back on my invoice or on the meeting minutes and went back on the agendas and I didn't see anything presented at that time.
My recollection is this went through the building grounds committee, was approved, brought to the board. We approved it, moved forward in concept. The September meeting, I believe, the, as the items came down the docket, the contract was a new ratification or approval, final approval with the board. But prior to getting to that agenda item, the project was put on a hold. So as we tabled it and did take action, the entire project was put on a hold. All indications prior to that were moving forward. So as far as the exact contract document, no, it was slated on that agenda. And that would have had all the details, the finer details.
So the board did not approve this contract? And the board did not approve the amount? We approved the concept, but we never saw amounts given?
The board, I believe, approved all of the preliminary testing that was spoken of, or the geotechnical data, the soil borings, all of those things that were required to even put the plans together. But it was certainly specifically approved with dollar amounts, is my recollection, prior to them happening. And again, the final ratification of contract was on the agenda, but the project was put on a hold before we ever got to that item. But in that same meeting, it was also approved that the project was stopping the cost incurred up to that point. We were to be taken care of. So I don't know if that fully answers your question for you, Susan, or not?
I don't know if it does either. I do feel like we had a violation of our policy 672 related to purchasing and board approval for costs over $10,000. I think that we didn't follow the policy in regards to this project. And I would ask as a board that in future, especially with large amounts of money, we are more conscientious of following policy that we have adopted.
Very cautionary tale. And this is something that Brian brings up regularly, is that we are not always crystal clear on what we're approving amount of it. So I think as a caution to the other workers and myself as well, when we approve something, we need to be conscious of it. If we're approving something conceptually, we're often approving something to a dollar amount, even if we don't really intend for that to be the case.
But in our policy, it states that if it's over $10,000, we have to.
Yeah, but it's on, it's on all of us to.
I know, and that's what I'm saying.
Enforce our own policy. So it isn't like I stood up at the board meeting and said, listen, you guys are all approving X. What dollar amount are you approving? I certainly didn't say it, and I was at the August meeting. I could have.
You didn't approve.
So.
You were the one that didn't approve.
Right, but I mean, I also could have called into question, well, what are you guys approving for a dollar amount? And I didn't do it, so.
I think none of us did.
No.
Because I don't know if we really fully understood how much that really came out to. If it's 103,000, that's not a little chunk of change. That's a lot of money, so, yeah.
I would agree with the comments, but we did have a total conceptual budget that we did approve on the entire project as a board. And that was a much larger figure. I guess I had assumed, and maybe it's just industry knowledge of the costs that are associated together, that I totally.
Yeah, I mean, I have no idea.
The, the exact dollar amounts, et cetera, should have certainly been worked through.
Those sheets that were given to all the board members that had the concept budget on it had the cost for the design work layout right on it. So you had it right in front of you and you approved it?
This, this is not a surprise to me. I, in fact, when we said to hold off on the project, I really felt, and to pay the bills at that point, I really felt we were paying this 103,000 at that time.
Well, you may have thought of that, but we actually talked about it that, at the time, that the actual dollar amount of how much we'd be authorizing. Because I remember, I, I was very specific that I didn't want to pause the project. I wanted to rescind it in its entirety, and I was very clear on that issue.
Yeah.
And then Brian was smart enough to say, well, wait a minute, we've already recorded a bunch of costs here. You said we're going to lose them all the costs. And I said, well, yeah, of course, we're going to go ahead and do that with the costs. And I remember we talked at the time, I don't remember the big numbers that we said exactly, but it wasn't 100 grand. It was in the 10 to 20,000 range, if I remember right.
It was 18.
Right, so it, I mean, clearly, we all didn't necessarily understand that we were at that, we were at the 100 grand point.
Or the people that did understand that didn't make it clear to everyone, I would say, Phil.
Yes, but, but keep in mind, when you get in, when you're into a construction project, we're not them. So we don't know, we might have known that they've gone to like at least through stage one, which is about what we were talking about at the time, but we didn't completely conceptually think about, well, are we all the way through stage two? Are we midway through stage two? How does that go along with the ramifications of any contract that we've had, either signed or implied? And it's hard off the cuff when you're just presented with that, you know, five minutes earlier to come up with a number. So I grant everybody that. I, I don't, I don't expect everybody to be able to come up with a number. So I, I think what you're saying is it, it's important because for future reference, we have to understand that when we started, when we authorize a budget of $2.5 million, we're on the hook for a big portion of that. We shouldn't be shocked when we get a bill for 100,000.
And they went pretty far into their phase two.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for point of beginnings? Okay, so the action item, action item, excuse me, presented is to take action on this invoice. Is there any motion being? Is there any motion?
Also move to pay the bill. I will second.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Fari, to approve the invoice as presented. Is there any further discussion before a vote?
Where's it going out of? Do you have an idea?
Where are we going to pay from?
You're going to check it to meetings?
Yeah, that's where it goes. And it'll come from.
Maybe it's our building fund.
It'll come from reserve to actually pay it? Because we don't have that kind of money to sit in and maintenance and building, right?
Um, usually, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in there, maybe it's budget for the year.
Yeah, for, you know, it, it needs a lot, so.
So I, I don't know that we know that exact answer off the top of our head, but if we, if we cover that and there's other maintenance projects for the rest of the year that those who come out of unbalance, if we don't have enough in that account, this could come out of unbalance, I mean, we're, we're paying there, we're paying there.
Any other discussion? Let's take this to a roll, Paul.
Crave, yes.
Mommy, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Schneider, yes. Ari, yes.
Cummings, yes.
All right, motion will carry on a 6-0 vote. Did we, one question I have is, do we have the deliverable of the plan set electronically, Mr. Henny, or do we need to receive that?
Yep, we do have. We, I know we talked about, uh, whether or not the engineers need to stamp them or not, but it sounds like that could be.
So can you provide a delivered, a stamp, stamp set of plans upon receipt of payment?
Sure thing, yep.
Okay. Thank you for attending the meeting this evening. All right, we'll move into action item B. The 2024 Strummer Scholarship Representative. As listed in your packet, uh, it's recommended that the board appoint Ms. Poyet. She served on the 2025 Strummer Scholarship Committee, excuse me for saying 2024 previously. The action item, any discussion? I believe Ms. Poyet has been on the board for, served in this capacity for some time. Is there any questions in regards to this recommendation?
Yeah, I just, I know there was some discussion on the last few years about representatives on there, and I just wanted to remind everybody that several years ago now, we took the names off of those applications. So the only thing that the, uh, committee representatives get are the data with just a random number assigned to those. Um, and that was done just to make sure that there was equity and transparency in the selection. So I, I'm not sure everybody was aware of that, I just wanted to make sure that you were. So there's no names attached to the applications.
Thank you for that.
I will move for the de Poyet to represent the Strummer Scholarship.
Second.
Okay, I've got the motion on the floor by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Dolphin, to appoint Ms. Poyet to serve on the 2025 Strummer Scholarship Committee. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Action item C is staff positions. There is a number of staff, staff positions listed on your former packet this evening. Are there any questions in regards to all the employment positions that we have listed? Looks that we're still looking for one middle school track position. Any questions or discussion?
I'll move to a few staff positions that have been listed.
All right, we'll second. Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Ms. Quanley, seconded by Mr. Fari, to approve the staff positions as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries on a 6-0 vote. Uh, I will make a, we'll go into action item D, it's a closed session. I will make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent C, uh, for the items listed below, listed on your agenda. Is there a second to that motion?
I will move to second.
Okay, that's a roll call vote.
Crave, yes.
Mommy, yes.
Dolphin, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Sorry. Cummings, yes.
All right, let the time show, it's 7:08 PM. We will allow, we'll take a 10-minute recess to allow tear down the cameras and we'll put it in the room and get into closed session. Thank you.